All right, it is four o'clock, everybody. We have need for a study session. Thank you, everybody. And thank you, Ms. Clemens, for joining us via Zoom. Good to see you. All right, with that, I will turn it over to our team.
We're grateful. Tonight, we do have the study session on the transportation master plan. And who was leading this one?
I don't generally be Mike Griffith from Kimberly Horns.
Okay, very good. Hi, Mike.
Yes.
So we'll turn it over to you. Thanks for being here.
Lucky me. All right, so I'm gonna hand these out, or maybe I'll see if Mr. Marriott can help me. We made a slight tweak to the presentation that was not in your Friday packets, so I just wanted to make sure to capture that. We'll go through the presentation and I'll kind of highlight what's different. It's not a big difference. It's just making sure that we're covering how projects were selected, how they're prioritized, and we have a couple of slides in here, but we can also point you to the document to see how that tool works. Okay, so let's go ahead and get started. I'm Mike Griffith. Most of you know me. I work for Kimberly Horn on the project manager on this effort. Worked on it for about two and a half years. I've got my colleague Curtis Rowe here. He's our transportation engineer and deputy project manager. We're happy to answer any of your questions. There's a huge team that works on those projects, so it's not just Curtis and I. And we are coming to the end of a very long effort, so we really look forward to your comments as we go through the presentation. Feel free to make comments as we move forward, or we can kind of take time if you may. So overall, the agenda for today, we're going to talk about outcomes for today's meeting. And we'll have a scope review because we haven't spoken since October. We have a project schedule update, the fiscal forecast, which is really the item that we would love to get council's input on. And we have recommendations as well. So moving into the learning objectives for today, we're going to go over the purpose and the status of the overall transportation systems plan. I will probably revert to TSP to save time. So if you hear that, you wonder what it is, that's just the shorthand for the transportation systems plan. And we'll talk about the process for implementation recommendations. So how did we get to the projects that we've selected and recommended? And we're going to talk about the CIP funding available for all infrastructure projects in the city of Arvada. And then we're going to talk about flexibility relating to grant funding strategies. It's no secret that a lot of our infrastructure is paid for by grant money. We would not be able to pay for our own infrastructure if it was solely coming from the money that we take in as a city. So that strategy is really important. And the things that I mentioned earlier, like I said, the council, we really would like to get input on is our funding buckets relating to the CIP and our decisions or recommendations there, and then the the strategy around federal and local funding. All right, so getting into a abbreviated scope overview, we mentioned this in the last meeting in October, it's basically three phases. And we're at the tail end of the final phase, so you see kind of we are here. And of all the phases, the thing I wanted to make sure that was clear, and maybe this is kind of hiding some of it. Oh, that was great. Not too bad, though. The TSP is prioritizing big infrastructure projects and planning, and it's over a 20-year period. That is different than what Public Works is doing from an operational perspective, which is maintaining existing roads and infrastructure. And there's a couple of examples here, so signal timing, the pavement program. Those are related to the TSP, but they aren't specifically prescribed in the TSP, so they're kind of, that's ongoing maintenance schemes. So phase one, in a nutshell, is identifying projects and deficiencies in our network for transportation. Phase two is identifying goals and evaluation criteria for selecting projects and advancing them. And then phase three, which we're currently looking into, is the project prioritization and the implementation recommendations that we have. So one thing I wanted to mention here is that the goals and evaluation criteria has been ongoing from the first day of the project starting. So back in May 2023, we were having kickoff conversations about goals and evaluation criteria. And we've had meetings with our tag teams, that's our technical advisory group, our tack team, which is our transportation advisory committee, public works managers team, our staff leadership. And we've taken feedback from the public on several online surveys. One thing I wanted to mention is we have Yadwega Brown here. She's the chair of our transportation advisory committee here to support the project and all the efforts. We've been meeting with them regularly. I think we just had our 10th meeting, so. It's been a rigorous process to get to July 2025, so that's later this summer, where we hope to have a document that the city can go forward and implement. So recapping, as a schedule laid out on the calendar, starting on quarter two of 2023, we have had a robust series of meetings that happen in sequence to go over the various tasks and deliverables with the tac tag, public works managers meeting. And I think wanting to make sure that we highlight here, city council updates. And those have happened in sequence with those other meetings. I also noticed we have the little bullhorn, so the first two in 2023 and 24, those were the online surveys. The results of the online surveys directly influence the selection criteria for public outreach. So we'll get into that, the mechanics of it, but that's where they sit. And then coming up here in June, we'll have the survey one and two and overall summary come out, so that'll be out for the public to consume. All right, now we can get into the meat of it. So the CIP budget for all transportation projects in the city can be divided up into several buckets. So those buckets are up here on screen. One thing I wanted to mention for sure is that the TSP implementation has its own bucket. So what we're looking for there is not necessarily to build projects, we could, but more than likely, it's to fund or seed early phases of projects where it's inexpensive. I'm sure that most of you are aware that whenever we start to pour concrete and move utilities and all that, it gets very expensive very quickly. But if we're identifying a need, or if we're developing a strategy around a future project, that can be inexpensive. So we can afford, at least we think we can afford, to put money into a bucket related to those tasks. And what that does, that's important, is it puts us in a good position to go after funding because we've already identified the need and/or defined the cost. So working with our finance department extensively, Brian Archer and Chris Listburg also weighed heavily in on this. We divided up over the next several years out to 2050, three tiers of funding coming into the CIP program. And so they're kind of highlighted in those maroon spheres there or cylinders. So the first one, 27 to 2030, CIP will be about $12 million. The next one is longer there. It's a 10-year period, 2031 to 2040, that's 39 million and change. And then on out to 49 million dollars out to 2050. Now that increases with a rate that we had talked about internally with the finance department as a conservative estimate on what what the rate increases would be. So this is, we can look at a pile of money that we have for all CIP projects. And then we can see the allocations that are set up for the TSP seeding. And we'll start to get an idea of how much money is available. There we go. All right, so if I had a bell, I'd ring it because this is where we get to the recommendations and we'd love your feedback on this. These are the buckets shown as a dollar figure amount. On the left of each bucket, you'll see in blue what we're spending today for each one of those particular categories. The green on the right side is what we would recommend. And what you'll notice is there's not a lot of changes here. And this is after many meetings with the different departments and the finance folks and saying, hey, where can we pull funding to seed these projects that we know are important? And coming to the conclusion that there's already a couple of buckets that have parallels that are pretty strong with TSP identified projects. And in particular, that's the Collector Street improvements and the arterial improvements. And so with those projects, we take what's already been allocated, so $300,000 for TSP spending. And we add some additional funding because we're already doing sort of parallel types of of effort. And we end up with a $638,000 annual fund for seeding future TSP projects. And that would all start in '27, so there's still some pedal of time between now and then. So this is something we would absolutely like to get feedback. I'll keep going, but we can come back to this. And then, as we get into, what type of projects are we talking about? Like, what is this actual effort look like on a continuum of effort? And then how do we select the projects? We're going to do that kind of coverage now. So if you look at the screen, I call this the construction or implementation continuum. So anywhere on there, any of those categories, scoping study, final approvals, construction, there's several projects that Arvada is currently working on, and they're all in different places on this continuum. And as you work through it, then you can see the money gets bigger. The scoping study and preliminary design piece, that's where we think we can seed projects from that TSP bucket. It's much lower in cost. It's cheaper to do. Not free, but it is cheaper. As we move forward, we can start applying for local, state, and federal grants. And those are going to be easier to apply for because we've already done the pre-work and we've justified the need. And then at the end, we can never forget that just because you've paid for a project and you've built the new piece of infrastructure, it's not done. The ongoing cost is substantial, and that's that operational piece. What does it cost to repave the road? What's the schedule for repaving the road? What are the other things that are needed on an ongoing basis to maintain the infrastructure we have and that we grow? All right, so I want to move through a little bit of how these projects that we have identified were prioritized. And this is the new piece that we added to your presentation. This is something the team felt would be valuable for council as you're considering some of the recommendations that we've made. So I wanted to break that down and make it as kind of digestible as possible. So if you look on the left side, all these pretty colors, those are our goals for the project. And as Yadwega will tell you, we have talked about the goals for two and a half years practically. And we have visited feedback from the public outreach surveys. We've worked with staff. We've worked extensively with different departments and arrived at these goals. So as they read, we then interpret them into specific weighted criteria. But the the percentage of the hole on the side there is what will make up the project scoring. So as you see, safety is the number one goal up here at the top. It has the highest scoring percentage for the overall factored score for any one project, 20%. One thing I wanted to make mention of is inherently, any project that we recommend is going to have a safety component because it's going to bring projects, existing corridors, up to modern ADA standards and other federal highway administration requirements. So it will be safer just by doing the projects. But the safety-related projects in this category have a specific measurable impact on areas with high crash rates, and that's total crashes, that's severe crashes. And also, it's scoring in a category high for safety modifications for FHWA. So there there are metrics relative there for safety. Each one of these categories can then be broken down into specific metrics further that are that are measurable. So as an example, as we look at this category here, this goal of invest in implementable solutions. That sounds great, but how do we quantify that? Well, we worked with staff to develop some things that are actually measurable. So off to the side, you'll see cost per mile. So how expensive is it to build this project per mile? And we can rate that against all of the other mileage of other projects and see which ones are less expensive. That gives you 34%. If we went down to Fitz and Existing Rite of Way, we have several projects that would be great to do, but they just don't have the rite of way. So it can be very expensive to purchase rite of way. That'll hurt its implementable solutionness. And then the bottom one, I think, is maybe the most critical in this particular goal, is how many partnering agencies are required to do it? Is it just the city of Arvada? Or do we have to have every agency in the state on board to complete the project? So you've got the potential in this particular goal category to have a Wonder Boy project, right? It scores perfect on all those. Congratulations, you've got 15%. Now you've got to score well in all of the other categories, too. And they all have things that we can measure.
Mr. Griffith, before you come on, I have a quick question on this.
Sure.
With the number of partnership agencies, I know for federal grants on the previous administration, they were really, really looking for multi-agency partnerships, larger things. They didn't want to, they didn't look too favorably upon single agency applications. Now, I realize there's so much in transition. There may not be an answer to this yet, but both of you and your partner are more plugged in than I am. So do you know if there's been changing guidance, Mr. Listburg, or anybody who might know this one? Has there been changing guidance on that from the federal government regarding the infrastructure knowledge?
I'll start and I'll let the smarter people fill in. But essentially, everything that we've developed has intentionally been very flexible. So we can, we can address changes at the federal level, different administrations. We're currently in a four-year administration. This is a 20-year project. So we get a lot of time to lead up on that, but I want to transition to Mr. Chris if you have something to add.
Well, we have started to hear via multiple regional channels, as well as some official documentation about the grant picture. That particular aspect of it, I have not had any news reach me, is that?
Okay.
A question about the criteria. Did any of these take into consideration emissions, carbon emissions, ozone, other air pollutants?
Yeah, so absolutely. So one thing I'll say is just globally, it's a, it's something that we're going to impact, right? Because today, the network is incomplete, so if you want to get around Arvada, you got to hop in your car. It's just the reality that there's trails to ride on recreationally, but those aren't really going to get you A to B if you want that to be your daily commute. We have a pretty, pretty substantial missing sidewalk network in the city, too. So if you're walking, you're biking, you're taking buses, we've taken in lots of comments from the public on the incomplete bus network, or even if you want to get to the G line, that can be difficult if you want to ride into downtown. So every single project that we are proposing is contributing to filling in network gaps that would give you options. If you have options, then you can make your own decisions about kind of how you want to get around, and that will affect carbon emissions right out the gate. Another thing that we've had substantial conversations about is the efficiency with signal timing. That's kind of its own animal that Curtis has been working on with the city of Arvada. But if we get the signal timing right, then you're sitting in traffic less and you're emitting less gas, and you have less brake dust and all the other things that are associated with congestion and traffic. Curtis, I don't know if I covered that right.
No, that's perfect. I think I was going to mention the improved intersection operations. That is the component. That's the underlying component. We're improving traffic efficiency, moving vehicles, and so that does improve their quality and, you know, the carbon emissions.
Right, and so I think that's a good one to bring up, Curtis. Thank you for that. And I also wanted to highlight the the ease of all modes. So not just completing the network, but making them easy to access, making them comfortable. One of the things that Mazzador would talk about frequently whenever he was working on this project is, you know, we have all these bike lanes, but some of them are on-street adjacent to 45 mile-an-hour roads. And who wants to ride a bike next to an SUV that's going 510 over that? No one, right? So it's important when we think about the implementation side of this, that we follow the cross-sections that we have in our standards manual. A lot of times, the projects that we implement are sort of a stopgap or a compromise. So we don't have all the rite of way, something's going to get pinched, but we still want to have that bike lane. So it ends up on the street. In an ideal world, there'd be a buffer. It'd be more comfortable. And so a lot of these metrics get at measuring some of that level of comfort. So I'll go ahead and move on, but I wanted to make sure before we did that this all makes sense, that you can only score, 100% is only going to get you so much in one category. You're going to have to do well in all the categories if you want to get to the top of the of the pile. I'm going to step back now and let my colleague Curtis talk a little bit about the roles that we play on these projects.
Thanks, Mike. I'll come join you, so give you a break, make it easier for you to see me. But so, yep, as mentioned, now, after we've used the matrix and prioritized everything, we started to look at the number of projects and and where those all fall. And so in the upper right, you can see that there's three different categories. We feel that there are projects, we divided projects into whether or not it's an advocate, where the city of Arvada can advocate for a project. So think of transit, RTD. That's a project where we can champion, we can support, but really, we need RTD in terms of improving or enhancing transit connections. The second is leading, and so that is where the city of Arvada can really be the one that actually runs that project. Creates the project, follows through, does the design, and then implementation. And so that would be a project that is led by the city. And then the last column is partner. And so that one is is the projects which rely on another agency or source. So for example, there's a lot of jurisdictions that border the city of Arvada. So if there are any roadway or other multimodal improvements that impact another jurisdiction, that would be a partnering exercise or a partnering project. Same with the state of Colorado. There's a lot of state highways within the city of Arvada limits, and so any of those CDOT projects, those would also be partnering. And so we broke those down into those three categories and then added up those projects, and they total up to $1.8 billion. Dollars. Yep, and so from the, you know, funding that's available, that Mike showed in the previous slides, obviously, that doesn't cover everything. And so we'll talk about the grants next. But just to kind of go through a little bit, so an example, the actual TSP has every project identified and whether or not it's an advocate, whether it's a lead or whether it's a partner. And so, for example, the Lockworth Bypass Trail, right there in the middle, 14, that's a project that is entirely within the city of Arvada's control. And so that is a project which we've identified as being a lead. You know, the top two are both transit, the Candelas to Old Town, as well as the 64th and Rolleston Transit Connection, and so those are listed as advocate. And so that's how that's broken down. And it's important really to differentiate those so that we know and understand the extent of the the dollar of funding that is needed for the city, specifically for the lead projects, because those are the ones that we can control ourselves.
Yeah, and this, if you wanted to look at the entire list, this is picking up on page 54 of the the full working paper that you have. And you can see how all of the projects ranked, because there's, I think there's 76 is what we ended up with, somewhere around there. Are there any questions on the lead advocate partner piece? Because this is something we talked extensively about with our stakeholder groups, community members, making sure that folks understand that we are not recommending that the city of Arvada start its own bus program. We are merely saying there's a gap in the network. It needs to be filled. And we need to lean on all resources to advocate for filling those gaps, which, go ahead.
Mr. Griffith, so what if a partner agency is ready to go on a project, but the city is not? I just wonder, are we sharing the the plan with the surrounding jurisdictions? So they can, they can see what we're planning and coordinate accordingly?
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question, and it's something that we have worked to address by meeting with our technical advisory group. So the technical advisory group has members from surrounding agencies and cities and communities. So when we get together, we had our, I think our meeting last week was with the technical advisory group. We had folks from RTD, from CDOT, and from Dr. Cog and from other Jefferson County.
I was just going to ask.
Yeah, and so they're in the room and we're having conversations about these projects and the process. They see much of the same presentation that you're seeing today. And we sometimes get from them, you know what? I'm not the right person from Jefferson County, but this person is someone you need to talk to about this specific project, and we'll follow up with them on that. But yes, this will be available once it's complete, even still, to the general public to view. And staff will have an opportunity to work and advocate for projects, even if we're behind a little bit on something that let's say Jefferson County wants to do, or Adams County. We can see where it sits on our priority list when we meet with them, and then staff has notes and all sorts of information on how that project will impact other projects.
Great. I just don't want to miss any opportunities.
Sure.
I gave a quick question. Is the partner role, can that be either a lead partner or a, I don't know what you call it, a minority partner or whatever role is it can be either, or is it only someone else is leading it and we're partnering with them?
Yeah, that's a good question and something that we've talked about with staff. I know Kelly and Thomas and the team have talked about, you know, exactly where the project sits, if it's going to be in that sort of leader partner role. Because depending on, I mean, who has the resources, time, energy, and whose constituents are yelling at them the most, it may shift a little bit, and that kind of falls back on the flexible nature of the TSP is that it probably could shift depending on what's going on.
Yeah, it could be both, like, you know, CDOT, if it's a state highway, they likely would be the lead, and then the city would partner with CDOT. But there may be an instance where there is a trail connection that extends out into Westminster, for example. And so then that would be a true partnership in terms of the city of Arvada, maybe taking the lead on the the portion that's in that city limits, and the city of Westminster doing their own portion. So it's it's different probably for each project, so it could be either. One thing I was going to mention, too, is like, you know, the dollar amounts that are in advocate and partner, that's total cost. That's not city of Arvada's responsibility. That's total project cost. And so most all of the amount in the advocate, that wouldn't be something that the city of Arvada would be needing to, you know, support provide, so.
We do a lot of work in the front range and elsewhere in the US with bus fleets. We do a lot of ZEB work. We do all kinds of things to deal with different aspects of transportation. And so we pooled on all of those resources to try and develop costs that would be as realistic as possible. And then we could cross-check those with folks on the technical advisory group team. So we could see if these are realistic, but Curtis is right. I mean, the bus cost is what it would cost to run a bus line. Arvada's not going to pay for that, but we wanted to account for it.
Okay, so where does this funding come from? Well, there's multiple sources. There's already a question about funding, and we know that the funding sources will change. It's inevitable. It's changed in the past. It'll change in the future. But as of right now, the applicable funding sources for each project were identified. And so we have a table, and so this is an example table that shows five projects where, say, number 42, the middle one, Indiana Street Reconstruction, because that's an important one, 64th Avenue to 82nd Avenue. You can see that we've identified the potential funding sources that would be applicable to help construct that project. So the Infra Grant Build SS4A, the Safe Streets For All, that's one of the grants that may not continue because that's a federal grant, so we'll have to see how that changes over time. But as Mike mentioned, you know, we're looking out 20-plus years, actually, until 2050, so 25 years into the future. And so there are some grants that are shown here that won't exist, but then there'll be other ones to take its place.
So the cost in this category is just anticipated to be our piece of it? Because the numbers are different on the two Indiana projects?
Oh, Indiana's split up into multiple phases. So we might be looking at two different phases of Indiana.
Yeah, the other Indiana, you might have noticed that from the previous, is that number 43? Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, we, some of the projects, so this happened in phase two, and we were looking at the, I don't know if you remember this, but I said unconstrained project list like 80,000 times in that October meeting. Because we had like this endless list of projects. Some of them were chopped up, some of them were eliminated or absorbed. And Indiana was one where we decided it made more sense for it to be segmented with input from staff and others.
Yeah, so that one, for example, is split at 82nd Avenue, so we have the southern and then the northern. And so the southern section, 66 million, and then the northern segment is 73.9, obviously with the.
And the reason they don't add up to the others is that there are lots of other partner projects on the list.
Yeah, and these are sort of the excerpt samples from the document. The document has all that in there. And then I think it's worth mentioning, because it's a really good question, Mr. Rupert. All of the work that we've developed for these documents are not static. They're tools. So they're they're extended pages for what I call smart Excel documents. So if we need to make changes, for example, on unit costs, because we had a very long discussion and effort to figure out what unit costs would be for any of these types of projects. If those change, or we need to add escalators in for inflation or whatnot, or the projects change because another agency steps in and does something, and the lead position shifts, all of that can change within the spreadsheets.
Yeah, that spreadsheet tool is fully modifiable, even if you look at something and say, I want to prioritize this because something has occurred, and you want to relook at a ranking of projects. You can do that. Or if you want to say, I really want to focus on vehicles and improving traffic, transportation. You can also focus specifically on those projects. And so the spreadsheet tool, the way it's developed, is that, or used by the city staff to really be able to sort as they determine, as they do.
So they go in and adjust the pie charts, the pie chart of answers, and then still hope it moves it up in the ranking? Is that how it works, or?
Hopefully, there's no gaming of it, but.
That's the theory, though.
Right.
Okay.
It's set up in a way, I mean, this is our first rodeo. We've done this many times. And we build it so you can't game it, because you'd be messing with so many metrics that are measurable. There's not a lot of fluff in there at all. So you really have to say, oh, well, it's so far from a, an intersection that has a crash history. It's just is what it is. One thing I wanted to add in here, Curtis, I didn't know if you wanted to, wanted to add relative to funding. So this is something that the staff leadership team has asked us to explore over the last several months. So this is something that the staff leadership team has asked us to explore over the last several months, is the ability for grant funding changing sort of requirements to be calibrated into the strategy overall. And so we've talked about that as basically meaning, and this is something we'd love to get council's feedback on, a shift from where we were looking at federal grants for all sorts of different projects. We really want to focus on safety and capacity. Safety and capacity projects are going to be awarded. I have no doubt in my mind that that will continue to happen. Other project types that, and the previous administration may have been awarded, are less known, if not probably unknown. So that means that we need to shift for projects that are more multimodal, equity-focused, or greenhouse gas emission-focused, need to come from state and local resources. Now, some of the state and local resources are funded by the federal government, and it's unknown how the strings will pass through those agencies if they're going to pass those requirements on to the recipients of those state-distributed funds. So, all that to say, it's something that we're keenly aware of, we're working with Kelly and Thomas and Chris to stay ahead of that on a daily basis. And we want to make sure that whenever this document is complete, then it's a usable tool, and it doesn't have to be completely read adjusted to make sense in the current administration. So that's something we would love to get your feedback on, because it is a shift from what we were originally considering as a strategy for grants.
Also, throw out there recently, Senator Bennett's office reached out to us on any advice or any items that they like us to advocate for as infrastructure bill reauthorization is planning to occur next year. And among several items we advocated for, and are still holding out hope that the reauthorization of the long five- to six-year term funding bill will closely match the previous infrastructure.
And I'll add in, just so we're not all doom and gloom. Huge kudos to Mr. Thomas Shaw and his team. They were able to secure an H-SIP grant from the federal government. And that is, I think, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars just last week, and that's to rebuild Eightieth and Kipling. So it's an intersection improvement project. I'll note that that is more than the entire TSP process has cost the city. So we've been working for over two years, one of the eighty projects has just paid for that bill. Thomas did a great job, really excited for him. So, the next screen just says thank you. But I'm happy to kind of toggle between some of these. We've covered a lot of material, I spoke as fast as I could so we could get through it. So we now have you to kind of go through anything that you'd like more information on.
He answered my questions. I'm curious about the evaluation and criteria waiting. Like, obviously, I don't think it's necessary for sort of our internal, but maybe it goes under be responsive to the public. But I, I'm curious, because we know, particularly when it comes to the federal part now, everything's sort of in flux. So if there's a way to incorporate sort of priorities of others, things that we know are going to likely, like, be of someone else's interest. And then maybe we highlight those, being like, okay, when these two projects are substantially similar, and they both have high value to us in Arvada, that could be the thing that tips us, because we know we're likely to get federal funding for it, or state funding for it, because it needs one of the pet interests. For instance, the federal government will be something about prioritizing families. Well, one of our key priorities is Indiana Street. We have a lot of young families over on that side of town, that's something we build in just because we know about it. I'm just wondering if there's a way to, and then it changes as, as our people above us change. But I'm just wondering if there's a way to sort of incorporate that, so that we always have it top of mind that it could be that two percent, one percent difference maker between two substantially similar value projects in our city.
Yeah, I think that's a, that's a good comment. I want to, I'll go back to sort of one of my previous comments about making sure that we, we look at this as a twenty-five-plus-year thing. So things are going to change, we're in a period now, we'll be in a period later. But I think, we also, we talk about infrastructure projects, they're, they're very long-lived. So you think about Ralston and Seventy-second, how long these projects take to get implemented. So the availability of grant funding can shift, but then like, the overall program may change in that period. So I think, I think there's definitely room for sort of what is the local grant climate like? And what are the, the kind of the requirements? We might want to include that as sort of something in our funding strategy segment.
Yeah, maybe that's housed elsewhere and not here. I don't want it to be the deciding factor in which projects we decide to do, we need to do what we need to do. And I really appreciate this, Rupert, and how it balances the many, many different needs. It's just one of those things, when we look to go for things, a project that's gonna seek to, you know, do clean air in southeast Arvada versus something on capacity on northwest Arvada, those aren't going to stand the same odds right now in DC.
Right, this is a really good point. I'm also thinking about it in terms of, so we have the implementable solutions, right? So I mean, one of the things that's nice, if we go into the individual goal, we can make slight adjustments to the categories and criteria there. And that might be a place where we could add something like that to say, how likely is this to get federal funding? Because then we need that to do it, right? Yeah, I think that's a, that's a great addition.
I like that, thank you.
I have a few comments. One on this slide, I thought it was interesting, the one that's currently up here, that the pavement quality index seems to be like the thing that Arvada residents talk about the most.
Yes.
Right, but it seems like it is only one in a bullet list of twenty, that is weighted at fifteen percent. And I, I kind of understand the weighting matrix, because safety for all, I mean, people care about potholes, but they definitely care about dying in a fatal crash more, even if they don't know that, right? But I'm just, just wondering about how much the fifteen percent category seem to reflect what the public cares about, if that's like matched.
Yeah, so there's, I think maybe two questions there, Ms. Ambrose. So the first one has to do with the PQI index, and kind of where that lands here. And the second one is kind of how we're being responsive to the public generally.
Right, well, you mean, you have that as its own weighted category that, like, if there is a, but that seems to be like project-specific? Or is the responsive to the public also, like, they care about potholes more than anything? Instead, it's what most people care about potholes and the quality of the pavement over everything else. So how much is that weighted into the projects?
So I'll talk about that one second, because that one's a little bit more nuanced. The first one is the PQI piece. So in general, the pavement quality piece is a part of the operations side, which is related to, but separate from the projects that are identified in the TSP. Several of the projects that are recommended, so these are like major changes to the corridors, also have issues with their pavement quality, so that allows us to score in that category.
Okay.
But it's not saying that that is all projects anywhere in the city, they would only have fifteen percent. It's a, it's a fair question, make sure if I missed any nuance in that. Okay, the second one, I'm glad you asked this, because we spent a fair amount of time and effort trying to, to meaningfully take all of the engagement. We did in-person, we did digital, we did a lot of different things. We went to events and did pop-ups, it was good. And all the staff leadership folks would attend those with us too, which was, we really appreciated that. We took the information we received from public outreach, and we put it into two buckets. One bucket would directly influence the responsive to the pub, public goal category. And so that's what you're seeing up there, and I'll dive into that in a second. The other one is sort of influencing the overall needs relative to transportation in the city. So how often did we hear about intersection safety concerns? Or bike trail connections, or poor lead times on buses? We heard that a lot, and so we started to calculate those, and we put those into some of these goals and categories. Those are tabulated in our public outreach summary. So back to be responsive to the public. There's two in this category, because they're measured from two specific places. The first online survey allowed people to put pens anywhere that they had a concern somewhere in the city. And then we tabulated the concerns, we got twenty thousand words of response. But the locations produced a heat map. And so we could see the proximity to a particular intersection, you know, this intersection had a thousand clicks or something on it. And we had, I think we had well over a thousand and fifteen hundred, something like that, individual responses on the first survey. So that's the first item right there. How close is it to a high proximity area? That can give you fifty percent of the overall public outreach bucket. The second one is interesting, because this is the one where we gave public, the public access to the unconstrained project list, the same one that you guys saw in October. And we said, first, we had an order, what is most important to you for type of transportation? So it's active, it's car vehicular, or it's transit, and then we did little buckets in there. Some of those, Ms. Ambrose, had to do with pavement quality as well, to see where roadway maintenance sat. That was one piece, but then we also asked folks to really, to provide for us the rankings of projects. So anybody that participated, and I think we had over a thousand on that survey too, actually ranked the projects that we provided us, the extensive list, in what order they would like to see them worked on. And so if you'll look there, the number of times the project was in the top five category, if it was in there a lot, you can get up to fifty percent of that bucket. So I don't think that this is perfect by any stretch, but we did try to find a way to really capture meaningful public input and then tabulate it.
Great, and then my second comment has to go back to this one that you said many times you need our feedback on. Because I think the decision point you're asking us here is to move three hundred thousand dollars from the street improvements to TSP implementation. And if I recall correctly, you're saying part of the reason why we do that is because a lot of the TSB implementation is an overlap of those street improvements. But where isn't it, those things? Where is it, like, there isn't overlap, and this is TSB improvement?
Go ahead, Mr. Loesberg.
It's a very valid question and, and a fact. When looking across the board at all of these counts, the three primary reasons that we left funds intact within the accounts that you see untouched here is maybe in areas where the overlap wasn't as predominant as, say, Arturo Roadways or Collectors, where some of these funds, give me as I'm scanning for a moment. I won't say that now. There's another fund here that's available that's a traffic signal rebuilds. It's primarily kind of operations and maintenance fund, but it is not shown here. A lot of these funds that remain intact were very efficient in their concentrated efforts, such as signal timing implementation. While he's touched on, and Curtis more specifically, he's touched on signal timing improvements that can be made for the efficiency of the roadway. We also do that as part of our larger CIP projects, such as the Eightieth App Main Project that was mentioned earlier. Thomas will be rebuilding, reconstructing Signal Long Eightieth, which would conclude with re-timing efforts during sixty-fourth and fifty-eighth currently. So we have ambitions to grow that program, but are already quite efficient in our spend down of those funds. Signal interconnect, we have ambitions to finally connect all of our signals and move on to the next evolution of a traffic management center, and feel as though those funds are best used in that case. And I could go down the line with each individual account. But the, these accounts are either quite efficient in their usage, their concentrated usage today, or we have ambitions for the future to utilize those things.
Is this broken down in the full report?
Yes, in a slightly different format.
Right, and I think maybe this is something that we can address. I'm going to wager a guess, Ms. Ambrose, that you're wondering, are we spending money? We could be on pavement improvements.
Oh, well, I just want to know, like, anytime we're asked as council, can you move these funds from here to here? I want to know, okay, what are we moving it from, and what are we moving it to? I want to see that detail level.
From Peter to PayPal.
Yeah, I think that's a fair comment, and what we have in the report as detail, we'll revisit that and make sure that we're line iteming this, so it's.
Great, thank you.
But that is the report that we got in our packet, or is that something different?
No, that, that is in the Working Paper Five document that you got in your packet.
Okay.
So I'll have to go revisit that. I think we have some more text in there, I don't think we have it actually done line by line, which.
Yeah, because I didn't see that.
We can absolutely work with, with staff and the finance department to do that.
Can I add, this is also something we're. Process, so our teams typically present our CIP headings to the vendor's office recommendations around where we have proposed specific projects for use of these accounts that you see here. We state progress of how we use them previously, and propose how we can use these accounts for very specific initiatives or projects. We typically do that through our budget process as well. So I think this is good feedback, and it's something you see come back to you through the regular budget.
Okay.
I have a sort of a follow-up question to this, because I, I generally strongly agree with the idea of, I don't know if we're getting quite to shovel-ready, but getting us closer to shovel-ready so that we can co-agree with chasing planning dollars, design dollars, or actual operational implementation dollars. Those are all really good. I, I know the past few years, because we didn't have a lot of shovel-ready projects, we weren't able to access some of the federal funds that had been available. And that was just kind of unfortunate for us, other communities kind of got them. But however, I do know that if a study sits on a shelf for too long, it expires. And then we have to go back and do it again, so we will have almost wasted money. So what's the strategy sort of behind this, when we're prioritizing the projects to make things closer to shovel-ready? And then we're chasing dollars specifically to those? Or are we making an investment on some of these with the hopes that an opportunity comes up?
We, we, as a planning level exercise, kind of took the six hundred and six, six hundred and forty thousand dollars estimated there, and kind of projected that out, and tried to hit a planning level kind of game plan. It's not included in the report, but you'll see that we were intending on some pretty decent seed funds for some of these advocacy roles, to do some preliminary studies, maybe even engage others to help us with those advocacy efforts. And then strategically, depending on the scale of a project, maybe take it to thirty percent and get our fifteen or twenty percent matching funds available. Or some projects take all the way to shovel-ready, so that they're really appealing. The strategy from there is probably to be determined, and will kind of depend on the landscape of the administration, at least the federal, and, you know, the decisions the states are making. It, it's going to be difficult. I think Wadsworth Bypass Trail, at three point six million dollars in a lead role, I envision pushing that to a hundred percent, being shovel-ready. But as you said, at some point, if you seek grant funds for ten years and they're just not coming, you have a hard choice to make. I get to talk to Brian more. But those are, those are a bridge that we'll have to cross at the time, depending on the political landscape. But the cross of it is, without the one twenty million, eight billion dollar number, there's only.
This was a patient, thank you.
Really appreciate it. Mr. Griffith, were there any items you wanted council feedback on that we didn't get to in the questions?
You know, I, I think one of the things that I know staff is going to be looking for help from council with is the advocate role. Right, so you all are in very unique positions. You're elected to represent huge populations of people and the city. And I know staff is going to need help advocating for projects that require your political know-how to go out and say, we need this in our community. Maybe you'll find that other agencies or neighboring communities also want those things. So I, I think there's a limit to what staff can do, unbelievably, there is a limit. And I think that's where it kind of moves into the realm of the political. So I don't know if there's any thoughts around what we put in the document that can help staff kind of manage, we want to advocate for this, how do we ask city councils if they agree, or what they'd recommend on how to do that? That's just something I, I think of, I mean, Chris, I don't want to speak for the whole team.
Oh, that is definitely going to be a multi-compete. Could not pick a robust level of classes in this. And it's a long one, a word to get into, but it'll be a lion's share of, of the transit and other aspects of progress that we.
So to answer your question, Mr. Griffith, I think that the politicalness is really, Dr. Cog and the regional is really going to be our advocacy around transportation projects. And, you know, being the former chair of Dr. Cog, sitting on that board for ten years, I think it's a delicate dance for electeds to dabble into the pot of money that we're all fighting for, for all the communities, because there's fifty-six communities represented at Dr. Cog's table. So what I would say in your plan, what you could do is really identify some that could be perceived as, or could be thought as regional significance. thought as regional significance. So example, you could say what, any of the Wadsworth improving, the trail across Wadsworth could be considered regional. When you talk about the Green Belt, or the Greenway Belt and so forth, or you could even stretch it as even Indiana, because thinking of traffic incident management issues, you know what I mean? So with, with limited north-southbound roads in our city and no really highways, I mean, like an interstate, movement between the region is challenging. You know, if Highway ninety-three closes, Indiana's impacted or Quaker, if Indiana closes, Wadsworth is impacted. You know, it's all those north-southbound, and that's somewhat true on some of the east and west, including like Seventy-second. So I, I would just probably stress inside there, ones that you can highlight that have regional significance, that could be easier to advocate at a Dr. Cog table. You know, if you say, if you say Fifty-second Avenue, you know, in Balsam, that, that they're not going to say anything to us. Dr. Cog's going to say that's not, that's not regionally significant, so that, that's why maybe you can identify those by asterisks or or maybe a little bit clearer description of why we think it might be a regional impact project. That would be my recommendation.
I do have one other request, if there's no other comments on that. So we are going to be producing the final document, we've actually already delivered a first cut to our staff leadership team to review, so as we put the final document together, we're also going to have the executive summary. At the end of July, we're going to come before you again, but it'll be in a study session. And we'll present the executive summary, you'll have the document that's been edited several times at that point. So I, I just want to know if there's anything that you would like to make sure we get in there beyond what we've already talked about. As we finish the final plan, is there anything that seems like it's missing? Or things you would like to know more about?
So I'm looking at the Northern Indiana project, and I'm looking at the factors that make a project really difficult, one is the railroads, right? And is there someplace that identifies an outside influence like the railroad as an obstacle, does it show up in the pie chart? Does it show up in the, the partnership reference when we're categorizing a project? I mean, I think it's, it's fair when people complain about a particular challenge that, that the plan reflects a really large obstacle to getting to it, even if it's not monetary.
Great comment, we have a project we're working on, the Consolidated Main Line in Denver, and the railroad is basically God.
I think we're experiencing that presently. Seventy-second.
Yeah, typically the, the way that we've worked with them in the past for at-grade crossings, they'll give you one if you take away two. It's like, great, anything else? So good, good comment, and I think that's something that we can work with the team on to make sure we're integrating.
To, to the comment that we made earlier about emissions, is it, you, you talked about how the you know, greater connectivity and, and having multi-modes will help address that, can that be called out more in this? Because it's not a separate criteria, but just to talk about how, what are the projects that will help elevate that?
Yeah, that's something we, we can absolutely work on, Mr. Pfeiffer, I, I know when we were at our the end of our phase two documentation, one of the things that staff leadership asked for was, how are we addressing equity issues? And one of the ways that we addressed that was we added a goal category for hard-to-reach communities. And we developed metrics around that, which are, they're measurable, it's not, you know, fluffy, it's real. I think we can look at the metrics that we already have and see where we can call greater attention to the impact to greenhouse gas emissions.
Can I just add, we've also, we met with Nolani several months back to talk about the coordination between this and the Climate Action State Ability Plan, so there are elements where we try to mention that and mesh those together. So it's referenced hopefully in both documents moving forward too.
I didn't see it in the packet, so.
Yeah, it's, so this is, I think in Working Paper Four, since that's when we were doing the sustainability documents or the crossover, I think it's more in there, and we just need to make sure that we carry that forward.
At least reference it somehow.
So I wonder if there's extra mileage in reframing that, so that it's less about sustainability and more about getting rid of the smog problem that Denver chronically has? I mean, I'm just trying to think politically about what's likely not to raise a red flag. And might enable us to get funding where we might not otherwise?
I'll just throw out, if you don't mind, that of course, with a grant opportunity has various requirements, or what they're seeking to remedy or make improvements in. And via the grant application, we're always looking at it through that lens and adjusting our submission to, to hopefully match as closely as possible to make us really.
Echo something Mr. Griffith said earlier on, I was at National League of Cities, I did one of those like sort of impromptu sit downs during open, open office hours for the different departments that I've sat down with them for the OT. And I was just like, what are you guys looking for, do you know, but just trying to intelligence together, and they, they iterated safety. As they're like, safeties really are our number one, there's changing parameters all the time, but we're definitely prioritizing safety.
There we go, there's the thank you.